Okay, we'll come to order. This is a special meeting in the Glendale Planning Commission on Wednesday, November 17th, 2010. Could we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Landrigan, Commissioner Lee.
Here.
Commissioner Sheets.
Here.
Commissioner DeSain.
Here.
Chairman Carson Kane.
Here. A report regarding posting of agenda.
The agenda for this meeting was posted on Wednesday, November 10th, 2010, on the bulletin board outside City Hall and on the city's website.
All right. Would everyone stand and please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Motion or comments on the minutes of November 3rd? Hearing no comments. Could we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and support call. Roll, please.
Hi.
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 Hi, and a vote of 5 to 0. The minutes of November 3rd, 2010 were approved.
4 to 0.
I'm sorry? 4 to 0. Thank you. Agenda item 5, Oral Communications. I have no speaker cards on that. We have nothing under zoning appeals or planning commission items, so we'll move to new business. It's Agenda Item A. It's the Urban Art Zone Change Text Amendment and Specific Plan Amendment, PGP 2010-004 and PZON 2010-008 for the city of Glendale. And it is proposed to amend Title 30 of the Glendale Municipal Code 1995 and the Downtown Specific Plan relating generally to expansion of the urban art requirements for installation of public art with a value of at least 2% of the project valuation, or as an alternative to installation, make a contribution to the Glendale Urban Art Fund, which I think is probably fund, equivalent to 1% of the project valuation in the DSP IMU/IMU-R, SMMU, C1, C2, C3, CR, and CPD zones within the city of Glendale in consideration of the associated Urban Art Comprehensive Policy Manual, General Plan Amendment Case PGP 2010-004 and Code Amendment Case Number PZON 2010-008. This is exempt from environmental, and the recommendation of staff is that we recommend approval of the proposed amendments to the city council. Staff, please.
Thank you, Chairman Kane. My name's Alan Loomis, Principal Urban Designer for the city's Community Planning Department. I'm going to start with an overview of the Downtown Specific Plan Urban Art Program as it exists today, just to give you an overview of kind of the concepts that were piloted in the Downtown Specific Plan regarding urban art. And then Kristin Asp looks, go into some of the logistics of how the draft ordinance has been put together. So, in 2006, when we adopted the Downtown Specific Plan, we included a requirement for urban art, 1% of project cost dedicated to art on-site, or the opportunity to meet that through an in-lu fee. And this was intended to support the overall vision of the Downtown Specific Plan, which you can see written up on the screen, of being a very vibrant, mixed-use, walking environment, but also importantly with very high aesthetic quality and a lot of cultural opportunities of which public art is supporting of that. These are two pages showing some of the examples we gave in the Downtown Specific Plan of the kinds of artwork that could be included. It's important to note that this requirement is really kind of the equivalent of a development standard, much like we would say a certain amount of square feet should be required for open space or for green landscaping. It's basically urban art, or this requirement is sort of considered in a similar vein. So, it's really a development standard. That's part of the Downtown Specific Plan. In the downtown, we already have some experience with public art and sculptures associated with development projects. In fact, a requirement for urban art was included in the earlier design guidelines associated with the downtown before the specific plan was adopted. I don't believe it was a requirement so much as it was a guideline, and so a number of projects did take advantage of that. We see variety of sculptures here and there throughout the downtown. And one that I'm not sure everybody sort of recognizes is public art, but I think is kind of fun, is the sort of wall relief next to Billy's Deli, which could be considered public art, not just sculptures. I'll leave out the, any kind of debate about the aesthetic qualities or artistic merits of the frogs at the marketplace, but I do think they're fun and kids seem to like them. So, we could think about art in terms of a similar kind of characteristic. It could be sculptures. This one's from Pasadena, a fish instead of frogs located in a fountain, but obviously very artistic sort of tile work in the plaza. This is near the, used to be the Weston Hotel, it keeps changing names. Sculpture, though, could be much more playful and far more interactive with the building. I believe the fish is from Seattle. The bear is actually two stories tall, and he's peering into the lobby at the Denver Convention Center, very much part of the kind of aesthetic qualities and kind of design or concept of both of these buildings. Urban art could also not necessarily be sculptures. It could be poetry or some sort of text. We see this in a number of locations where poetry or text is imprinted into the ground or into various kind of other aspects of the buildings and development. We could see very large-scale murals integrated into buildings. This is from the Little Italy area of San Diego. This one is back in Pasadena. And this begins to start to talk about some of the ambitions of the Downtown Specific Plan Art Program, which is to really integrate the art concept into the building. You'll notice that this is the cinema loft, which gives you a sense of why the, that tile work that says 217 looks like a film strip. But this is also located at 217 South Marengo Avenue, so it also functions as the address. So, it's kind of a fun sort of play on a couple of different concepts there. These are examples out of Hollywood. This is, I always want to say this is Magnificent VII, but they're missing three. I forget which film this westernness comes from. But there's two kind of components to this. One is the sort of sculptural effect of the, kind of like billboard roof sign kind of feature that sort of stands on its own, literally. But then you can see a cast of shadow on the building facade across the street. So, there's also a play of kind of light and shadow and time integrated into this art piece, and obviously a reference to films and westerns out of Hollywood. This one's located near Staples Center, and really another good example of how art can be integrated into the building architecture and be interactive. In this case, the pedestrians are walking on this grid located in the sidewalk in front of the lobby, and as they step on that grid, the squares light up, both on the sidewalk, but then also on the facade of the building above them. So, as people walk in front of the building, the facade actually has a little bit of play going on in terms of the light piece. So, this is a concept that's sort of played with light. And then finally, an example, another one out of downtown LA, the Caltrans Building. The courtyard and lobby or plaza area has this kind of, it's called racing stripe neon kind of wrapping around the plaza. That's actually a piece of art commissioned by, and developed by a fairly well-known neon artist, but I think is so well-mixed in with the aesthetic qualities of the building that probably most people are not aware that that's actually part of the art requirement and not just part of the architecture. So, in many ways, this is kind of the ambition we had with the downtown, is to see architecture and art, public art, really tied together and intimately related. Since we adopted the specific plan, we've actually only had two projects that have proposed art projects and actually had them, the art plan approved. When the specific plan was first drafted, the Art and Culture Commission was the approving body of the art, and that came after all design review entitlements, SEQA, and other sort of planning entitlements. So, what happened is the first round of projects that came through the specific plan actually just put the art off till later. So, there's about four or five approved projects that still need to develop an art plan before they can pull their building permits. But in 2009, we amended the specific plan so that the Art and Culture Commission, or another body, is determined by the council, would review the art plan and make a recommendation to the city council as the design review authority. And so, we've had these two projects, Legendary Tower and Hyatt Place, sort of successful results of that process. So, just show you briefly what we've gotten out of those. 300 North Central, Legendary Tower, down here in the corner, is a kind of quasi-open public space, and as part of that, there's a kind of light sculpture hanging from the ceiling, a sort of chandelier kind of effect. It doesn't look very exciting in the renderings, but these are some of the examples of the work done by the artist, a very, very famous neon artist. If you've ever gone through Chicago O'Hare Airport, through the United Terminals, there's a tunnel with all sorts of neon that sort of is interactive, and it plays music, and the walls change color with light. That's the work of this neon artist who's, was commissioned by the developer 300 North Central. So, the intent is that that space will be animated with the changing of lights as people move through, much like that example I showed by Staples Center. Hyatt Place Hotel, just down the street, is another example where we thought the integration of architecture and art was very successful. Down at the street corner, you can see there's a little sculpture. Here's an enlargement of it, sculpture, sort of two faces, like they're meeting at the street corner, kind of running into each other at a hotel, very urban in a way of sort of people interacting, and that's sort of symbolism. And so, while on the one hand, there's a rather conventional sculpture located in front of this building, what you see on the bottom image is that the imagery, the kind of imprint of that sculpture has been, that graphic has been turned into the pattern for the light sconces and skylights over the port cochere as you enter into the building. That pattern also repeats itself in some of the flooring tile work in that dining patio there, and it becomes a motif throughout the whole building. One of the more exciting features of this is that the windows that look into the swimming pool also pick up the kind of motif of that, those two faces. So, the swimming pool you see at the bottom is actually cantilevered over the port cochere, and that very kind of abstract wall just to the, to the right of the car is, actually contains the swimming pool, which is then down at the bottom. So, this is a very kind of exciting project in the sense that the art really became an idea that sort of became part of the kind of embellishment and decoration throughout the entire building. It wasn't just a single piece of sculpture, it was sort of spread throughout the whole building, and really represents to many of the goals of the Downtown Specific Plan Urban Art Program. So, this is a success that we've had so far. Obviously, we'll see the built results when these two projects move forward, they're just approved in the past year. But this is what the Specific Plan Urban Art Program as it exists today is sort of intended and what it accomplished. So, with that, I'll turn the presentation over to Kristin Asp to talk about how that idea is being translated into a new zoning ordinance for the citywide.
Thank you, Alan. I'm just going to basically cover the, sort of the mechanics of the ordinance, what is the threshold, what's exempt, how does it get reviewed, and then finally, how are we going to handle pipeline types of projects? So, as Alan said, the idea is to take the current urban art requirement of Downtown Specific Plan and apply it citywide. It would apply to not only new buildings and structures, but would also apply to any alteration or repair that has a value of $500,000 or more as determined by the building official. So, it could be new square footage to a really extensive tenant improvement, TI, project. It would apply to the commercial and mixed zones, specifically the Downtown Specific Plan, the IMU, the industrial mixed use, the IMU-R, industrial mixed use with residential component, SFMU, C1, C2, C3, CR, and the CP zoning districts. This requirement would not apply to any of our industrial zones or residential zones. So, once you've reached the 500,000 threshold, the ordinance would propose us to require either one, installation of public art with a value of at least 2%, and that is a change from the current DSP, the, of 1%, or a contribution to the Glendale Urban Art Fund equivalent to 1% of the project value. The reasonings behind the contribution to be tiered is to give an incentive or a choice to a development project to pay into the Urban Art Fund if they find that including public art is just not something that they're interested in. What would be exempt from this ordinance, consistent with the DSP, would be projects financed with public funds, small and/or affordable residential buildings and structures, projects financed with development in-lu fees, capital improvement projects, designated historic resources, and nonprofit service providers, and that's defined as a 501(c)(3) under the IRS code. What's proposed is, in addition to the exemption, is vehicle dealerships. Vehicle dealerships are currently exempt from development impact fees, and it was, based on council's direction, it's proposed to add them to this exemption list. Now, how it would work, who would be the review authority? Should a project decide to install some form of public art, the process would require preparation of an urban art plan, and there are some guidelines that were attached to this report that would help somebody develop a plan, and have that plan approved by the design review authority. So, that could be the city council, that could be the redevelopment agency, it could also be, include the design review boards, as well as a director of community redevelopment and housing level. And after, they would be the final approving body after recommendation by the Arts and Culture Commission, or any other recommending body as designated by city council. And the thought behind establishing the design review authority as the final approving body for public art was to ensure that the art that does get developed and installed becomes an integral element of the overall project. It has the potential to reduce afterthoughts or plop arts that are dropped in front of buildings, typically that we've seen in certain projects. And to deal with pipeline projects, these would be projects that are currently either have some sort of approval. This requirement would not apply to projects that have received a design review approval in the Downtown Specific Plan because they were already subject to the urban art requirement as part of that plan, but it would apply to projects outside the Downtown Specific Plan that may have some sort of design review approval or other discretionary approval but would have not pulled an actual building permit. So, that sort of summarizes some of the basics of the ordinance and concludes staff's presentation. We're available for any questions.
Mr. Lee?
I just have a question regarding the design review process, where I think you mentioned that the design review authority could be more than one entity, and that council would direct, who will review this? Is there a reason why that several bodies were, you know, being looked at, you know, for doing this, rather than just having one, you know, process where design review board, you know, automatically reviews this? So, from what I heard, I think you're mentioning that there are several entities.
There's a, the entity of the recommending body of the urban art plan would be by the Arts and Culture Commission or any other body that city council, you know, deems to appoint. But the actual approval of the art plan and the piece of art would rest with whoever the final design review authority is. And so, just based on different kinds of processes that we have, if you're in the redevelopment agency, if you're in the Downtown Specific Plan, or if you're in just a regular commercial zone, the final review authority, design review authority, could be the design review board, could be the city council, could be the redevelopment agency. So, it's just following those existing processes. It's the recommending body that may change.
I see, understood. No, I have one more question. Regarding the 1% and 2%, if our goal was to promote the urban art, and which, you know, the Hyatt Place was really beautiful, and I'd like to see something like that really promoted, you know, to have 2% versus 1%, you know, people might just elect to just contribute towards the funds, whereas, you know, because, you know, there's difference. My question to you is that, that Hyatt Place, before you're proposing this 2%, did they do that with a 1% fee? And, you know, if I suggest that, you know, why not just go with, let's say, 1%, 1% or 2%, 2%? And that'll pretty much, I think, force people to do a more urban art than, you know, anything else.
The Hyatt Place was approved under the 1% requirement that exists in Downtown Specific Plan. The 2% requirement versus 1% in-lu fee that's being proposed is per the council's direction. A little bit of context on that, when we discussed this with the council, I believe we had two different study sessions with them. Initially, they had an interest in setting up simply a fee for projects under a certain threshold of size, and just say, we'll just charge you a fee. We actually can't just do that for legal reasons. I'm sure the city attorney's office can elaborate on. So, because there was an interest in the council and building up the urban art fund, they actually wanted to construct the program to actually make an incentive for people simply to pay the fee. And what we've seen in the Downtown Specific Plan area is that a lot of the smaller projects, and even actually some of the larger projects, tend to just have an interest in paying the fee, even at the 1% requirement as it exists today. I think Hyatt Place, partially because it's a hotel, there was a strong interest in having an art component. I think they saw that as an asset to the project. But some of the other more recent downtown projects have said, we'll just pay the fee.
Well, the follow-up question is then, that 1% fee that, you know, you are kind of, I guess, you know, you designed this so that people pay that 1% fee, will go to several, seems like, agencies or recipients? And how do you control, you know, how do you control that? Whereas, if it's a project specific, you know, they'll have an art piece in front of this one building. Whereas, if the fund goes into certain, you know, and then that gets, I guess, you know, how does it get directed to, you know, different agencies or different programs? And, you know, I'm just a little bit curious on...
Maybe to restate it is, the urban art program gets X number of dollars.
Right.
What you're asking is, how do they distribute it? What's that program? What's that basis?
What projects are there, you know?
The idea at this moment is that once such a fund has actually been accumulated, ultimately the decision-making body of how it's expended is going to be the city council, or a body that they might assign at a later time. At this point, where that authority lies has not been completely worked out, but we do know that the city council has a lot of interest in being able to control such a fund if there is one. And if I may add something to what Alan said with regard to the 2% versus 1%. Another part of the discussion that has come up, and we have seen in practice, is that we say that the worth, the value of the art should be 2% or 1% based on the valuation of the building, but in practice, the value of the art is determined by agreement, not necessarily so much, it's not so much of measurement that you can do as much as it is an art itself. How many people agree that this piece of art or this component is worth really about 2% is subject to some review and discussion? That's why it has been given so much attention in terms of who first makes the recommendation of the art component and who has the final authority of the art component. So, in theory, a good developer with a good artist may be able to actually present a nice piece of art for a lot less than 2% at his or her cost, but then the value of the final piece could be more than that. So, that's a little bit flexible, whereas if somebody wants to just pay for it, we know that at a minimum, we should get a percent for the cost, and then we will know, the city council will know ultimately how to spend that.
Talking a little bit about the 1% to 2%. So... Talking a little bit about the 1% to 2%, so, the way I interpret this, is what you're trying to do is discourage people from enhancing their buildings and basically giving it to the city, to use as they so choose.
That's how I see it, yeah.
So, in a way, you're discouraging somebody from doing something like the hotel, you know, that has some striking features, because, you know, anybody, you know, the financial guy, their CFO at some point is going to look, you know, the architects are going to have their ideas, the designers are going to have their ideas, and the CFO is going to go, "Dudes, 1%, 2%, we're giving it to the city."
Right.
You know, and if that's the, you know, if that's the, you know, the socialistic aspect of things that council wants, that's fine, but let's recognize what it's doing, and it's going to take away value from the individual property. You know, it's, okay, great, you want it to, you know, give us the 1%, then we'll figure out what to do. The other problem that I see is that with this 1%, now, the city, the only place that the city can install art is literally on the property they own, you know, the right-of-ways, basically, which may be fine, but again, now we're losing all the options of being able to put great art in, on private property, accessible to the public but private property nonetheless. So, I'm not, you know, I'm a little uneasy over what that's going to actually promote. Mr. Garcia, was there something you wanted to say?
Just to add, and I guess you could say it either ways, to discourage, put it on, I think what, the way Ms. Loomis stated it, I would agree with, which is to provide that incentive to actually pay the fee, there was a great interest, I would say, by the council to see what mechanism you could have to get that fee. Because of legal requirements under the government code, I think there was certainly, we couldn't just charge the fee, you have to have that option to put the art onsite. And so, it's more expensive to put it onsite, but there's still the option. Essentially, from a legal perspective, it's actually a development standard to put public art onsite, and then we were letting, we were leaving developers of that obligation by allowing them to pay the fee. That's how these programs have typically been justified legally, and that's kind of what we're doing.
Okay.
You're right, we are, there is going to be an incentive to pay the fee, but I think, I do agree with Ms. Loomis and Mr. Agani, that in some circumstances, you're still going to see it onsite, because there are those developers that are, even those costly are going to see, over the long run, they're going to appreciate the value that it's going to bring to their project. So, I think there is some support for the view that you will see it, you just might not see it as often if you, if the number was 1% to 1%.
Mr. Agani?
Thank you very much for indulging us to keep responding to your question, but in our experience, the smaller project, the larger projects that tend to have the more sophisticated design teams and architecture teams and builders, will want to bring in their own artists because they'd recognize the value of the art. It is something that they can, from the get-go, put as part of the portfolio, and then they're performer of the project, and they will know that it'll eventually add to the value of their property. But when it comes to smaller projects, that's when you have a small housing development or a small commercial development, it just becomes another thing to deal with, and you may not have necessarily the interest, or from the developer, to bring in an artist and incorporate it, and they may find it just very well easier to just pay the 1%. And we will not have to deal with art that we will have to say is, does not meet our requirement. And in other cities, I've witnessed when somebody comes in with a project, and they come up with a tile and say, "This is my public art," and it becomes a point of debate. Whereas here, that smaller project can opt out and just pay and not deal with that discussion. So, in some cases, it'll provide a relief for the applicant.
I guess my thought is that, you know, that's fine, so you'll collect 1% on the smaller projects, but, you know, if you keep the art project at 1%, there are increased people, like Hyatt Place or other larger development projects, to actually, you know, increase them to do this, you know, art project. So, you know, you're almost like penalizing people for, you know, trying to do urban art, this type of sculpture type of thing, or, you know, make the building, you know, with the really creative arts.
I think the way I see it, and I agree with what my fellow commissioners say, is that, my question really is, why can't we just make it 1% and 1% for the fund, and 1% to create the art? Because like you said, it's, I mean, it goes, it's not really set into 1% in stone, and also, when, there's also, there's just an added challenge already to create this art for the building. You know, it's not about, this is how much it's going to cost, but the developer has to go and find all these people and put these things together, so, you know, that in itself is already an incentive to just pay for that 1%, you know what I mean? And now, you're adding 2% to build the art for your building, plus the added challenge of finding all these art people and then figuring out what's the best look for your own building. I think that adds even more of a challenge and a difficulty to do it, even though, you know, you have this huge project, and you have all these people working for you, and I'm sure it's easier than a smaller person, but it's just surprising that, why can't we just have it the same percentage? Because you still have an incentive to add to the fund. And also, if we're trying to protect the lower-cost project, have we looked into maybe like a tiered project, a tiered percentage point, you know? So, we have like this, we have this option for, you know, if we're really, if we're really going to stick with this way that staff wants, or the city council wants, then have we looked at it in a way where, you know, projects up to a million dollars would be more encouraged to pay for the fund, and then larger projects can, you know, be at the normal rate?
If I may, Mr. Chair?
Of course.
Let me, I appreciate Commissioner Ryan's empathy for the developers. I must come out of the closet about that and say I don't have the same level of worry or sympathy for them, and as I have worked with many developers over the year, I have, over the years, I've learned that, number one, the city of Glendale is probably at the end of the game in adding public art to their requirements. I think the first city in California that started it was in the early 60s in San Francisco, and over the year, and the city of LA, I think, added it in the early 70s, and by then, many other cities in the LA county had already made that a standard requirement. Glendale, for many, many years, held back and did not make this requirement. And having worked in other cities where the percent for art was 1%, and then was later increased to 2%, I've discovered that the developers come knowing that this is part of the portfolio that they need to bring in, part of the project, and again, the larger developers who tend to want to add this to their environment, whether it's 2% or 1%, they have their own ways of finding an artist that may cost them half a percent, who knows? But, again, the question is, we don't really know how much it costs the developer for the hotel to create that piece of art. We think that it's worth probably 1% or more, probably more, in terms of what it presents for the city, and so, again, it becomes a matter of subjective analysis. So, I'm not too concerned, as much as you might be, that the poor developer is going to find the right artist to add to the team of the designers, because this is already part of the business, it has been for decades in California. So, that's number one. The second part, the two-tier system that we evaluate the projects on the size, cut us into some legal complications. So, this was the best solution that would meet both the direction that the city council wanted to go, and would meet all of the legal requirements that we would come up with, so it would keep it clean and simple, and again, would give us a chance to deal with the smaller projects at a much more simplified way. I hope that answers the question, but...
Well, let me just say that, the first part of your question, it almost sounded like you were sensing objection to just the 1% rule of, you know, the 1% public art feature. And speaking for myself, and I'm suspecting with my other commissioners, we don't object to the 1% public art thing. I mean, you're right, Glendale was slow coming to the table on that, that's an accepted feature to enhance the community throughout the country. What we're talking about is now, now, the city saying, it's going to truly, in a way, it's going to truly be public art, we're not, we're going to take it out of your hands. I can appreciate why you would lose the whole argument of, is it 1% or a half a percent, or, you know, the whole valuation argument, that disappears, there's a benefit there. But I'm just going back to what I was forecasting before, you're thinking of this beautiful project, maybe it's another high-end hotel, you know, so in your mind, you have a scenario painted that, they'll give us the 1%, and they're still going to do art. And I, my scenario in my mind is nine other projects that wouldn't do that, and that the architecture is going to suffer, and the buildings are going to suffer because, you know, because they no longer have the incentive or the requirement to do something with their building. I mean, that's just where I'm coming from on it.
Eric, you have some more to add to?
I'm sorry?
Well, the definition of artist, I have a separate question now, I'm going into. What if the feature of the art is like an architectural feature? And does the artist's definition also include an architect? And if this, you know, if it's a signature piece of a building, and it's not necessarily they commission an artist, does that also fall under this whole thing?
I think every architect that approaches us to do a project downtown asks that question, and the standard answer I usually give them is, "No, we appreciate great architecture, it should be artistic, but the intent is really to have another author at the table who is an artist, who does public art, or in some fashion." So, that's, we've generally told architects, "We think you're very nice, and you do great work, but, and it's artistic, but that does not make you a public artist." The intent of the program is, and it's written into the plan, actually, is to foster collaboration between architects and artists, so that sort of implies that there's a second author at the table.
This is something like, like, say, Walt Disney Council Hall, if itself is a kind of art piece, but that does not qualify as a...
Right, if we ever had Frank Gehry come to town, we'd tell him he needs to bring in another artist, and he's great friends with many artists, so I don't think that'd be a problem.
Another small, big sculpture.
I've got a garage planned, so, you know. Mr. Sheets, you had some comments?
Long, different line. What comes to mind, it's in the same area, but it's not about the cost, what I sense is needed, or might be part of the intent of doing this, is something around continuity or theme as far as the city and the downtown evolution. And the concern that came to mind was, if the developers are making this choice, in lieu, not in lieu, how does that work with the idea that we want to bring downtown art? If everybody pays the fee, then do we, what I'm picturing is, this corner has a beautiful art piece, and we skip 15 buildings, and we have an art piece at another building, what's the plan look like that's going to evolve, have a theme of types of art and colors and so on throughout the city, that we take care of that, instead of, like was mentioned in the presentation, plop art? We throw it over here, we throw it over there, what does that do? What does that do? That kind of puts us in another area that we go, "We don't like that, how are we going to fix it?" So, that's the kind of sense that I had in reading this.
Well, let me just, I think I can refer to some of my experience in other cities where they actually collect art, urban art fee, and the answer is that ultimately, the city has the opportunity to program it in many different ways. In some ways, for example, I worked in a city that they brought in a six-month exhibition of a renowned artist's work, you know, and they distributed a lot of the different art pieces all over town, and everybody really got to enjoy them, and it created a lot of tours that attracted people to the city, and, you know, put the city on the map, really, and then that created such a strong program that the city actually started working with their local galleries, and started putting artists' work on exhibition in different parts of the, on the public right-of-way, that not only introduced the artists, introduced the gallery, and did very well for the business of the city, and created a very artistic environment. But in, at the same level, the city, in those cities, they have also been able to fund performing arts, and fund some of the programs that their artist residents could not otherwise afford to produce themselves and expose themselves to the public, and then create performing arts. You might know of the California Plaza in downtown LA, they have summer nights, summer concerts that bring artists from all over the world, and they're free to the public, they bring art literally to the public space, and in that case, actually, it's on the private property, but it's open to the public. And these are so many different ways that art can be present in Glendale using the fund that wouldn't otherwise be present all over, and would not be programmed with that much flexibility. So, there are benefits to actually collecting the fee, as opposed to having it be in one location at all times.
The fund, this little, you know, this little barrel of money that's going to grow over time, and then be disseminated, where is that parked, so to speak? Whose department is it going to be placed under? Is it part of the general fund? Is it...
No, it'll be a separate fund that'll be maintained for this purpose, it won't be in the general fund, it'll be funds that use in program for arts.
And by ordinance, it'll be limited to that? It couldn't be used to be taken and fill potholes or nothing like that? Okay, so, it's locked in for the purpose?
Right.
Good. We have a couple of people in the audience, I don't have any speaker cards? Okay, just touching base. Other questions, other comments?
Yeah, a couple more.
Please.
The reason it said we're not going to be doing the same thing for dealerships, and I think the reason was said because there was no development fee that we charge for dealerships, is that the only reason, it seems like a dealership, dealerships, their designs and their architecture and the buildings are getting more sophisticated, especially looking at the BMW structure and brand, and also Lexus, so it seems surprising to me that we wouldn't also want, and to encourage dealerships to participate in this type of program as well.
I guess I'll take a stab at answering that, and others can jump in. Right now, the dealerships are exempt from many of the development fees that we currently have in place, so the thought process was, in a similar fashion, make them exempt from this program. That may be another option, or place with the planning commission to make a recommendation to the council, that's still up for discussion. The council actually asked to see the list of projects that would be exempt from this ordinance before they actually checked all, any of them off of the box, so...
I mean, by the same rationale, I'm building on that, by the same rationale that you've talked about on your high-end projects, and I recognize the special role of the car dealerships in terms of the sales tax and that benefit that they bring to the city, but by the same, you know, the conversation about developers, you know, the car dealerships, I think, would have the same kind of thought process, and they just need to realize that that 1% is, you know, a cost of doing business. So, I would, you know, in part of our discussion, I think that's something that should be, again, revisited with council in terms of the pros and cons of those people being involved.
Absolutely, if it's the desire of the planning commission to forward some sort of a consideration to the city council about car dealerships, we would definitely understand where you would be coming from. That is, that has not been an easy topic for staff. In fact, staff, on the list of exemptions, we had several meetings, and we kind of disagreed and agreed, and what if this happened, what if that happened? And in the end, I can tell you, with the car dealerships, the reason is purely economic development driven. And at this point, given the number of car dealerships that are popping all across the region, it is very important for us to focus on empowering our car dealers to stay competitive and actually take a competitive edge, and we've discovered that where we can gain that is by helping them expand their sizes to be at these huge sizes that make them grade Class A, I believe they call themselves, dealerships which have to do, which has to do purely with the size and the inventory that they have. So, we have an interest in encouraging them to go in that direction and make themselves competitive in the field, so they can become, they can continue being an important tax revenue generator for the city without having these other issues to deal with. However, we do also understand the viewpoint that you're bringing into the discussion, because that's also the kind of battle that staff went through amongst ourselves.
It's the same kind of conversation, and you've stated it very eloquently, but it's the same process that a potential developer will go through too. I mean, at some point, that 1% can say yea or nay on a project, and it's just part of the economic reality. Affordable housing component, now, it wasn't affordable housing project, it was an affordable housing component, and I guess I'm wondering why a project that just had it, and maybe you're thinking affordable housing projects in total, but why exclude it for when it's just a component of a project?
Other than the car dealerships, the exemptions that are proposed are coming straight out of the downtown specific plan as it was adopted in 2006. coming straight out of the downtown specific plan as it was adopted in 2006. And at that time, it was 25% of the project was, if 25% of the project included affordable, then it was exempt from the arts requirement. And the logic behind that is simply that there's also a social value of having the affordable housing and those projects tend to be, you know, somewhat difficult to finance because you're subsidizing for the affordable housing. So that was the thought there.
Well, and I could see taking maybe the value of the affordable housing out of the equation, but again, I'd revisit that as well. A lot of times, the affordable housing component is brought into it because there's an, you know, a financial advantage for the developer. And again, to me, it's just part of the math. I don't have a strong feeling about it, but I would just, again, revisit personally that part of the, you know, that part of the exclusion.
If I may, also, part of the reason that we, we originally, when we were discussing the downtown specific plan, we came to that conclusion, was that in our experience, all affordable housing components usually are done through some sort of a joint partnership between private and public development. And the affording housing component usually is fully, if not, if not fully, mostly subsidized with the help of various public agencies or grants. And those monies are very difficult to assemble, so the idea is that the public entity brings in this money and works in conjunction with the private developer. And in what we get in return is that as part of a larger, nice development, you get some affordable housing component and the developer also gets a few benefits through the housing that they provide. There's eligible for concessions, so in the end, everybody wins. But the part of the affordable housing component is so difficult and so expensive to assemble and is usually subject to a lot of public funds, the taxpayers' funds. So we thought we might as well just remove this additional burden from it and then work through the overall development with the developer to see if it's just a component, how about the rest of the development that we could still subject to public art to? It, you know, I could see that there could be many different viewpoints, all valid about this, but that's where the logic came from.
One quick one. The approval body, whoever it might end up being, will they make their decision based on a criteria or standard that we have in place? Or will that be something that'll be done on a case-by-case basis?
Yes, the draft guidelines are intended to help provide some criteria to assist not only the final approving body, but also the recommending body. I would anticipate that the final approving body, because it's also a design review authority, is also going to be looking at, is the artwork well-integrated into the overall design? Does it enhance the site plan, the public spaces? Right now, we've generally used that sort of, that's kind of been the criteria we used on these past two projects.
Could, could a fund like this, and I just know that, for example, the Alex Theater, you know, at some point, the city funds that are currently going to go to that, you know, are sunsetted out, would this be a funding mechanism for something like the Alex Theater in the future? You know, as a potential?
Would not be, that would not be, that would not be precluded.
Okay, so there is the potential.
The options, yeah, it's a pretty open, yes, it's a pretty open, the city council could set the policy as they deem appropriate.
Other thoughts, other things to share with us on the, on the process?
Is there, is there any requirement, I know, I guess there isn't, reading through it, as far as what level the art should be in, if it's, if it's a skyscraper that's being proposed, you know, can, does it have to be on pedestrian level? Or is this something that can be on the roof, you know, rooftop signage? Is there a requirement on that or does it matter?
No, it, it doesn't have a requirement that has to be within so many feet of the sidewalk, but the nature of it being public and accessible and visible to the public tends to preclude certain, very difficult to observe kind of environments. I could certainly imagine a skyscraper having a very kind of elaborate public art feature, like a sort of light feature at the top of the building. And there's some examples that in San Francisco, where the crown of the building is designed by an artist in collaboration with the architect. But generally with the thought that the artwork should be public, it tends to bring it down to the ground floor and in the public spaces, open spaces surrounding the building. Even on Hyatt Place, we discourage them from including anything in the lobby as being public art, even though hotels by their nature tend to be somewhat public spaces in their lobbies, but, or private courtyards, you said, if it's in a private courtyard, it doesn't meet the intent of it being public art. It needs to be visible by the average person walking down the street or sidewalk or driving down the street.
And my other question is, is there currently any money in the urban art fund? Or is there, do we know?
I believe we have. Emile?
Just when you thought you wouldn't have to speak.
No problem. Members of the commission, Emile Tatsivos, currently, we only have a single project in the downtown area, in the DSP area, that has opted, it's a small tenant improvement project that has opted to pay into the fund. I think it was about $6,000. So we have a big whopping $6,000 to start with.
Is the fund precluded from playing the lottery?
I'll defer to our legal.
Yeah. Well, you know, how do you make $6,000, $6 million, right? So, okay. Other questions, comments from staff?
Just one more, I mean, it seems to me this, the 2% and the 1%, I'm going to go back to that. Knowing more about it and hearing what Mr. Loomis has to say, and especially the requirement that, you know, we're going to have to, we're going to tell, we're asking the developer to go and find an artist and make this a partnership between an artist and an architecture. And obviously, it seems like not all developers and architects are aware of this, as Mr. Hogani said, that they're asking about that. You know, they're, they're thinking maybe this is only precluded to architects, or can it just be architects? So they're trying to find out, is this, you know, more than that? And it is more than that, you know? And then part of that also includes going and meeting in front of the Arts and Culture Commission. So it's not, it's not really a share of empathy I have with the developers, but it is, it is the, it's, it's a requirement that you're going out and finding, making these partnerships, which we really want. And we want to, we want to encourage, I would think. And also going in front of the Arts and Culture Commission to give the city and the community this kind of cooperation. And I think it's nice because we get to see it in the news press and I think it's publicized as well. And it's good for the developer and I'm sure they want it too, for those reasons. But I, but I think in general, that's a, that's something I see as a good thing and we would encourage. And so I guess back to my point is that I would probably want to recommend to the council for those reasons, since we have those requirements in place and since we want to foster that relationship. To me, it just seems to make sense that we just have this at the same percentage level. And if they do want to go the easy route, not through finding the artist and then not going through the Arts and Culture Commission, which is an added, added burden to them, you know, they could just pay the, to the fund. And that's just my opinion. And I, I think I would, I would share for that recommendation.
I think you just crafted a motion.
We'll need a motion.
With maybe removing our dealership from the exemption.
Well, we do need a motion.
Yeah, exactly.
But it can, it, it can have comments, so to speak. It's a recommendation more than anything.
Right.
You know, for, for my part, first, I thought staff was extremely well-versed. You clearly looked at a lot of sides of the issue. You know, every so often, we'll come up with questions and we'll see, oh, hadn't thought of that. You've done a really good job of, you know, of, of addressing our concerns and saying, yeah, that's true, but here's how we're looking at it. I, you know, I don't, I always have concerns over what I view as social engineering, you know? And clearly, the 2%, 1%, that's social engineering. You're pushing that money away from that building, you're putting it into the city of Glendale's hands. But on the other hand, sometimes social engineering's good. You know, it's good to have money for the FAA to make sure planes don't fall out of the sky, and it's good for the city to have money to fund public art. So in that regard, I'm more forgiving, you know, over the whole process. You know, I'm suspicious about it, but, you know, more forgiving. So, so, you know, based on, you know, based on what staff's presented, based on our questions, you know, clearly, I can recommend to the city council they proceed. Again, the 2%, 1% thing is being well-noted, you know, in terms of, you know, what's really going on there and, you know, the unforeseen consequences really need to be challenged on that. We talked about the car dealerships, we talked about the affordable housing component and revisiting that and, and their participation. And again, you spoke really eloquently about, you know, the, the revenue stream and the economic engine aspect of things. And, you know, if that's the way it falls, that's great, but, you know, I would just challenge it to be looked at again. Other comments, other thoughts in the course of us coming toward a, a recommendation?
So what you're-
Mr. Garcia?
I apologize, Mr. Chair, I just, I didn't know if you opened the hearing or not, so if you didn't.
I did, I thought the whole thing was a hearing, actually. I'm sorry. It is clearly an open hearing. Thank you so much for qualifying that.
So, Mr. Chair, when we make the motion, then we'll be making the motion as is with the recommendation to, to review 2% versus 1% plus the auto dealership from the exemption list? Is that, is what you-
And the affordable housing component? I think, yeah. I mean, that might be a way to craft that. Yes.
I think one thing that might be interesting, just thinking about this, like, okay, maybe if we keep it at 2% and 1%, then maybe we add this other thing to it that says, you can actually have 1% if you use a local artist, if you partner with a local artist. And I don't know, maybe, maybe that might be, that might work and that might be like, you know, because that's going to involve much more work for the developer to go and find this local artist.
Section 3 artists. Somebody from a-
I don't even know if that'll be possible, but it might, but it might be interesting.
Join in the conversation.
I was debating if I should share this with you, but given that you, you keep on thinking about this issue, and I'm not necessarily advocating 1% or 2%, but I just want to share with you what staff learned during the research process. We looked at different communities, and what we came across with is that the development community is actually very sophisticated. Many of them understand the value of public art, so to them, it really doesn't matter if it's 1% or 2%, it's part of their performance going in. So it's really not going to make a difference. Those developers who want to leave their mark in a community and want to become a part of the community will go all the way. So I just want to give you that perspective that we have come across within our community as well as our surrounding communities, that those developers whom we hope to attract, regardless of this 1% or 2%, that they, to them, it's just a number, but ultimately, what they gain goes beyond the dollars in terms of their investment in the community. So they are in the, in the process of balancing the public gain and the dollars they have to invest. That's at least what has proven in our analysis with, or research with other communities.
So you're saying there's no point in even incentivizing to work with a local-
I would never discourage incentivizing a local artist or developers.
It'll look good for the planning department, once it's done.
But the idea isn't necessary, I mean, it's valuable to foster local artists, but it's also valuable for the community to go beyond and understand what's within the region and what's within, within our surrounding rather than just locally. And we did, we did learn a great deal on these two projects that Alan shared with you in terms of what developers expect, both in terms of going through the process as well as investing in a project because of the long-term investment in the community. So just wanted to show, I was debating if I should share that with you or not, but hopefully it gives you another perspective.
No, it's just an idea and then, I mean, you guys can ponder about it later.
So the, and I'm not sure, I'm feeling that the urban art fund that we're talking about in the program and how things are going to be spent, it's still in its infancy, right? I mean, it's, we're, you know, we've got $6,000 to spend right now, so, so as that develops, that might be something obviously to consider is incentive, there are communities, for example, I know in my career, that some communities will give X% of a nod to a local business, you know, 5% or 10%. It's a little harder to, to do that when it's artwork, you know, because again, you go back to value. But certainly, there might be some, you know, as the program develops, you might find some ways to be able to focus on literally the local artist. I, I'm sorry, I thought a hand raised, I just saw a motion from the side. Further comments? All right, I guess I need to close the public hearing to have the motion. So we'll close the public hearing. And would somebody like to make a motion along the lines that we've been talking about?
Well, I think we are. You're not going to go or?
Eric?
Well, I want you, want you into this motion.
Okay. So I move, do we have a-
There is a motion. It's right here. There you go.
Thank you.
You can see it in the standing.
So I move that upon consideration of the proposed ordinance relating generally to expansion of urban art requirements for installation of public art with a value of at least 2% of the project valuation, or as an alternative to installation, make a contribution to the general urban art fund, find, it says, supposed to be fund, yeah, equivalent to 1% of the project valuation in the DSP IMU, IMUR, SFMU, C1, C2, C3, CR, and CPD zones within the city of Glendale. And Planning Commission hereby recommends that the city council adopt the proposed amendments to Title 30 of the Glendale Municipal Code 1995 and Downtown Specific Plan with our added suggestions. Do we have to state those right now?
So I think we got them. And those recommendations to consider, the following items, and we have a list of the items that you mentioned.
Second.
Motion for our call roll, please.
Mr. Lee?
Hi.
Hi.
Thanks.
Hi.
A vote of four to zero, the Planning Commission has recommended to council that they adopt the urban art zone change tax amendment and specific plan amendments PGPT 20-10-004 and PZON 2010-008 with the additional suggestions from the commission. Let's move on to something I'm really looking forward to, seriously. The downtown art and entertainment district presentation, and this is an informational presentation on the proposed downtown art and entertainment district focused generally on Maryland Avenue between Harvard Street and Wilson Avenue.
Thank you, Commissioner Kane, again, Alan Loomis with the planning department. This is where we're going to spend all that money we get out of the arts fund, is in our arts and entertainment district. This is a conversation that we've been having with the city council for a little over a year now to discuss the idea of how we can kind of designate a certain area of the downtown as an arts and entertainment district. I will note that, in fact, actually, when the DSP was adopted, one of the follow-up recommendations was actually to, from the advisory committee that worked on the plan, was to designate an area of downtown for art, as an art district. So this is a follow-up to the downtown specific plan recommendations. This presentation is really intended to simply give you a kind of overview of the conversation we've been having with the council and the redevelopment agency at this point. We anticipate that sometime next year, January, if we're moving very fast, but maybe February, we'll be bringing forward some specific code amendments related to this district that would enable it. So I wanted to give you a present, an overview of what to expect, overall policy context.
Are you thinking that it'll be a, a new zone or an overlay of some sort?
There will likely be some minor amendments to downtown specific plan and potentially some amendments to the zoning code, depending on what sort of incentives we try to package together. I'll talk a little bit more about some of the next steps coming up when we wrap up. So this is more at a conceptual level. When we talk about an art and entertainment district, we've seen these in many other cities. We know these, we go to them when we vacation in other cities. Sunset Strip in West Hollywood is one of the more famous local examples. It's really focused around nightclubs. Chicago in the Loop, there's a theater district, I believe, has something along the order of eight to 10 individual theaters and very active nightlife. The nature of these districts tends to change depending on the kind of characteristics of the businesses. So they might be music clubs like in West Hollywood or in Chicago, it's more focused on stage theater. So there's a kind of local coloring to them depending on what kind of venues we're talking about. There is also jazz clubs and other kinds of music clubs that might be part of this. Jazz Baker is very famous and used to be in Culver City looking for a home, a new home on the west side. There's also on the entertainment venue side, there's also what you might call concept clubs, like Lucky Strike Lane, which is a high-end bowling lane. And there's a number of other similar kind of venues like that, ESPN Zone, places that are sort of focused around a particular kind of concept but are more than just a bowling lane or more than just a bar, they have a, a kind of cachet associated with a brand. So those are the kinds of- So those are the kinds of businesses and venues we might be looking to attract. The area that the council ultimately focused on and gave staff direction to work on is, as you mentioned, Maryland Avenue generally between Harvard and Wilson. This diagram shows some of the qualities that Maryland has. First of all, in the north, it's anchored by the Alex Theater, which is obviously the premier art and entertainment venue in the city. To the south is Central Park, the New Adult Recreation Center, and the Central Library, which in itself is also something of a kind of cultural and artistic center, they host a number of movie screenings and book talks, and in addition to being a repository of the kind of cultural and artistic production of the city. And just off to corner, number three there on the map, is the proposed home for the Museum of Neon Art, that would also serve as a kind of south anchor. So much like a shopping mall would generally have two sort of department store anchors at either end, Arts and Cultural District has two existing civic anchors at either end. And Maryland Avenue in between is only two blocks long with a lot of good pedestrian access to Brand Boulevard. One of the other features of Maryland that's actually advantageous is that because it's not Brand Boulevard, if it turns out that this is an entertainment district, arts, entertainment district, that's only active at night because it's theater venues or music venues, it's not going to hurt the kind of retail trade that happens up and down Brand Boulevard. In fact, to a certain extent, Maryland Avenue is already a little bit of a sleepy street, so we're actually hoping to energize it even, energize it more with this proposal. There's also the advantage that there's two very large parking structures on Maryland Avenue, so there's a lot of capacity there, and really limited residential nearby that's going to be affected by any potential kind of activity that could happen there into the evening.
Mr. Loomis, if we have questions at particular slide, can we interrupt, or would you prefer us to wait?
Our view, we'd like to do it. Certainly feel free to interrupt.
Okay, just wanted to know.
Okay.
Well, I have a thought, but it can easily wait, so.
This is aerial perspective, then, of the proposed district that we presented to council just a few weeks ago, so with the Alex Theater to the north, Central Park and the Library to the south, and you can kind of see how these two places, the sort of, the street can be potentially anchored by these two different venues. One of the important features that we presented to the council is that there does need to be some kind of architectural adjustments on both ends to make, to bring those two venues to actually face onto Maryland. Right now, neither one of them really has a connection to Maryland. So we'll talk about that shortly. The other advantage of Maryland Avenue is that there's actually a significant number of opportunity sites up and down the street of properties that are unfortunately already vacant, like the Circuit City and other places such as the Exchange Theaters, where we anticipate that those theaters are not going to be renewing their lease in the near future, that puts pretty significant number of properties are available for very kind of coordinated and quick reprogramming of the street to change its identity.
It's going to look like Flint, Michigan before too long, if you don't do something about it.
Yeah. Hopefully not that bad. The other advantage of Maryland is, the other advantage of Maryland is that in addition to the two public anchors, we actually, the city or the redevelopment agency actually controls a certain amount of property there, principally with the two parking structures. The storefronts are leased by the city, so we have some ability to tenant those ourselves to help jumpstart the district. So talking about the north anchor in relationship to the Alex Theater, as I said, the Alex Theater, while it's an anchor on the north end, has no connection to Maryland and Wilson, but when we drafted the downtown specific plan, we did anticipate the potential development to the south on what's currently Lot 17, public parking lot, might incorporate some form of a courtyard that would link from Maryland and Wilson up to the Alex Theater Courtyard. That was a sketch from the DSP, so of course we know the Alex Theater Courtyard, and a small passage might be another link down to the, down to Maryland from, from the Alex Four Court. And this could be a great opportunity for expansion of the Alex's kind of programming efforts, could be, you know, outdoor movies, it could be a place they could use for outdoor dining and VIP receptions in collaboration with some of the restaurants and, on brand, and whatever the potential development might be on that site. This is an op, this sketch then shows what it looks like currently on Maryland Avenue looking north, see what's the parking lot, but anticipating that, you know, new development on Lot 17 could, really needs to have a pretty strong vertical icon that sort of anchors that street, so you know there's something at the end, and something that could complement the Alex Theater spire, and also attract your attention from Brand Boulevard. So this sketch showing possibility for a theater was a kind of big tall marquee. And this marquee could take a number of different forms, these are two other examples of kind of tall marquees. The Kirk Douglas Theater in Culver City is actually a really good example of a venue that's very similar in a district that's very similar to what we're, might be anticipating. Culver City's entire downtown is almost focused on arts and galleries, but the Kirk Douglas Theater is an anchor. There's also on Maryland Avenue, an opportunity for a lot of the storefronts facing Maryland Avenue to open up to the street. The sidewalk currently is a little bit too narrow for outdoor dining, but simply having windows that could just sort of slide open would allow any potential restaurants to really be part of the street, even though they're not outdoor dining. So there's some very minor kind of improvements to existing facades that could help facilitate this kind of indoor-outdoor relationship. This is an interesting example in New York City of a storefront gallery that literally the entire wall opens up when they have galleries, and the storefront is all of about 12 feet. In fact, this is called the storefront for art and architecture, and this very modest-looking little building is in fact kind of the intellectual center of the architecture community in New York City. So very modest things could have big impacts. At the south end, we have the Central Library and Central Park and Museum of Neon Art. We're currently working with the museum and a landscape architect to develop a east-west passage that would connect the Americana to the Central Park and to the New Adult Recreation Center. And in very short order, we're going to be sending out an RFP for Architectural Services to renovate the Central Library. A major component of that RFP is to reorient the library, so that has entrances both to the north and to the south. So it's currently that big glass reading room that just has glass facing north and south, imagine those as, back, a kind of south door and a front door. The south door stepping out onto the park, the north door would step out onto Harvard and have a kind of major presence and kind of public plaza at the south end of this proposed district. So one potential example is very similarly scaled and had a similar set of circumstances at Redwood City, is their old courthouse. This plaza in front of it used to be a parking lot and was recently remodeled to be a major public space. So we're anticipating something similar in front of the library. And then finally, thinking about some of the existing buildings, principally some of the big format movie theaters that might be going away, what could we do with them? On Wilson, the Exchange Theater, one possibility is to open it up so that the theater actually marquee sort of, and doors step out onto Wilson, activating the street instead of being the backside of the movie theater. And there's some interesting examples of sort of refurbishing old kind of boxy warehouse buildings into vibrant entertainment, arts, public spaces. This is an interesting example in Portland, you can see the existing building, but it was refurbished as the living room theater, which is a kind of art house, movie theater was a pretty upscale bar and restaurant, it was a sort of lobby space. You can see that sort of really changed it, very small screen, six-screen theater, you could see they're very small and intimate. This is somewhat similar to the new gold class cinema that opened up in Pasadena in terms of the experience you have.
In the bomb shelter.
Yeah. Except you don't have to go underground for this one. It's obviously right out on the street with the sidewalk. It's a very happening place in the evening. And then another example, this is the Cosmopolitan Theater, which is a kind of stage theater and kind of arts consortium in Sacramento. This is literally a tilt-up concrete blocks, it used to be an old Woolworth's, it's recently refurbished to be this new theater. So that's a kind of very brief overview of some of the kind of qualities of this proposed district, and I believe this is, this, I believe this is my last slide, so I'll wrap up sort of discussing the kind of concept of the district here. I will say, in the future, we anticipate a number of kind of layered approaches to facilitate this. As I mentioned, there's some minor amendments to downtown specific plan that the commission will be seeing in January, February. There's potentially a series of amendments related to how parking is handled in the district. The thought being that reducing some of the parking requirements may be one of the prime incentives to bring operators of theaters or nightclubs or music clubs or galleries, museums to this district. There's also working on a pretty coordinated marketing campaign with trying to attract brokers and operators, redevelopment agency staff, economic development has been really hitting the streets trying to drum up some interest. We're also looking at sort of various branding opportunities for the district, and in addition, also looking at a series of different opportunities or kind of ways that we might sort of license operators here, depending on who they are, and dealing with some of the kind of logistic issues of people coming in and, you know, how do we know they're good operators? So we're looking at a number of those neighborhood services staff. So the commission will ultimately not be seeing all those dimensions of it, just, you know, finally be making a recommendation purely on the zoning and downtown specific plan amendments, but we wanted to give you an overview of what the whole picture looks like before that comes up. So with that, I think all of us involved would be happy to answer any questions.
The, I forget what street runs parallel to Maryland to the east?
Louise.
Louise, and is the entire block from Louise over to Maryland Zone commercial? Is it C2, C3?
Well, everything in this area is part of the downtown specific plan.
So it's DSP all the way to Louise?
Right. The Maryland Avenue is actually called the Maryland District, is the sort of specific portion of the downtown specific plan. Louise on over is part of the East Broadway District that extends all the way to Glendale Avenue, and that's intended to be, but like all of the downtown specific plan, a mixed-use environment.
Okay.
So much of what you see there today could continue, but it could go more commercial.
Intensification in this area makes total sense, in terms of entertainment, later hours, things like that.
Right.
And has there been conversation to try to make Maryland something of a, well, a paseo, a pedestrian type of avenue? I mean, it's tough because of the parking structure access.
Right. There has been conversation, I think one of the next steps we'll be looking at is what opportunities are there to improve the pedestrian environment on Maryland? Again, because the parking structures have driveways coming in and out of Maryland, it's going to be difficult to just close it off entirely, but there might be opportunities at certain times to close portions of the street.
Street fair type thing.
Exactly.
No, that may make sense. I mean, part of the problem is you're trying to get people there, and if you close off the parking to them, they're not going to want to walk, so you have to make that convenient, I understand.
The marketplace garage, which is at the south end, has driveways in and off of Maryland, but also off of Harvard, so there's some, more possibilities at the south block to close the entire block off for to vehicle traffic for pedestrians only, depending.
Knowing what's happening in that part of the city, in terms of losing the movie theaters and that type of stuff, is there anything, and I think we're being fairly, or planning is being fairly proactive here, is there anything that needs to get fast-tracked to be able to allow that district to be nimble on its feet?
Yes, I think Alan has already touched on some of them, parking, and we are coming up with a package of parking, transportation, monitoring and management, and valet monitoring, management, and then the series of licensings. We're working on creating those so that we can create an expedited process for the individual applicants that will come in, as opposed to going every, for every application, we go through a separate process, then we can come up with a process that addresses the entire district, and then we could then administratively deal with every applicant without going through a hearing every time.
Are we looking at a three-month window to bring this forward, or do you think a little longer?
I think for the code amendments I mentioned, yeah, hopefully a three-month window, and hopefully about the same time for developing some of the processes that the Director Hargani discussed.
Members of the commission, if I may also add, there's an exciting project that unfortunately won't be coming before you, but there's a mixed-use project at 200 East Broadway, about 208 units with ground floor entertainment uses that supports many of the uses, use types that Alan described earlier. That's going forward to the agency towards the end of this year. Hopefully, they'll get off ground next year sometime, that's what we have been told. So that does set the tone for the district to start moving with some ground floor entertainment-related activity.
Is that the Circuit City building?
That's the Circuit City building, right. Yeah. And then we are also seeing a lot of retail interest in some of the vacancies that we currently have, working with our economic development staff. You know, there are only so many sectors of the retail industry that's expanding in this market right now, and those that are expanding are very interested in Glendale, so in working with our planning friends and economic development friends, we're trying to make, put incentive packets together for them to continue considering City of Glendale as their expansion destination.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Anything else, commissioners?
I just think it's really exciting. I finally get to see it, I've been bugging Mr. Loomis so much about it, but it's really exciting to finally get to see the whole thing, and it's really well done. My only question is, the, you know, I saw the big tall signature pieces on some of the intersections, which is really interesting. Is that, is that like part of going to be a requirement or an incentive to add those pieces in the architecture, or how is that going to be included?
Yes, thank you for bringing, noticing that and mentioning it, as I felt also, so one of the other things that the commission will be seeing in all likelihood is a creative sign ordinance that would basically allow architects and developers to be able to put together this kind of tall signature elements that would be signs integrated in with the architecture, somewhat similar to how we discussed the art, but in this case would be for signs. So we'd be looking at that.
Something separate, it's a sign ordinance just for this district?
Be just for this, in all likelihood, just for this district, although we haven't quite looked into where else it might be applicable.
Right.
That's the thought right now. And then through the design review process, we are able to sort of suggest to people that, well, you do need something tall here. And in fact, with the project that Emile mentioned, at 200 East Broadway, we had a lot of conversations with them to work on the design of the corner at Broadway and Maryland, so that that corner really catches your eye as you're walking down Brand Boulevard and sort of encourages you to come, block the one block over and go see what's happening.
So just out of curiosity, is that project a part of that whole art fund? Is that part of the downtown, the current art requirements?
Correct.
So are they doing-
They've actually indicated they intend to pay the in-lift fee.
Oh, okay.
So the $6,000 potentially could increase quite dramatically.
Oh, that's the $6,000 you talked about?
No, the $6,000 is from a project that's already in process.
Okay, so this is going to be another one?
But if the whole billing permits, they'll be contributing quite, and expanding that quite dramatically.
All right.
Just one quick question. You mentioned a way at the south end to connect or make a passageway across to the Americana?
Correct.
Is there, knowing that that would then lead to connecting to the Galleria, is there, is there any type of thinking around collaboration between all of the, I mean, I know you, a lot of vacancies there, so there aren't people to communicate, but, but my thought would be, as they go forward, it would be really, I think, help to support each other, you know, try to, people at the shops, maybe want to go to a restaurant, have the restaurant work, team up with shopkeepers in the galerie or something, and, I don't know what it would look like, I don't know if there is such a thing, an association or something, but is there some thought about that, or some consideration?
Well, we haven't talked to the Galleria specifically about their connections through the Americana to this district.
Okay, all right.
But I know that the Americana owners that Crusoe affiliated are very interested in this connection across the street. They do see it as-
Sense.
Having something activated across the street is going to help their tenants on brand.
Goes both ways.
Right.
Exactly.
So they're very interested in seeing that happen, and very supportive of the proposal we've had in place right now.
And in addition to that, last week, the council agency reviewed and directed staff and consultants to work towards creating a new downtown BID, Business Improvement District, that would include the Galleria, the Americana, and actually the entire Arts and Entertainment District that you've seen as one entity. So that would be one organized way to deal with the situation.
Very good. Anything else?
Mr. Sayen, anything you'd like to add?
Yeah.
All right. Mr. Loomis, great presentation. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I hope to see you on us in a few months.
Very good. Unless there's anything else from staff, I'm going to ask for planning department updates. Nothing else? Okay, please. Any comments from commissioners? Motion to adjourn?
So move.
We are adjourned.